It is now 7:30 PM. I will call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of April 8th, 2021 to order. This meeting is being held via video conference on Zoom. I am now going to a roll call. Matt Walker is not with us tonight. Myself, Mr. Donovan is here. Mr. Dwyer, I do not see. Kim Kay is here. Mr. Peck?
Here.
Ms. Thurlow?
Here.
Alternates, Mr. Lisca? No. Denise Markovitz? Is here. And no, Mr. McPherson?
Yes.
I see you. All right, so we also have anticipating applicant, excuse me, applicants. I do not see Christopher and Gabriella Herbert of La Llorona, negative. All I see right now is Mr. Ken Biaga of ONG. And who is, is Mr. Rizzo public or is he with you, Ken?
He's with me.
Gotcha, okay. All right, at this time, I will sit Ms. Markovitz, which will give us, let's see, one, two, three, four, five members. There we go. I will now read the guidelines of the Zoom meeting. Please remember that while unmuted, we can hear you and everything going on around you. We can also see you. Board members and staff will be unmuted during the entire meeting. As required by executive order, everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking, such as John Smith, board member, Harry White, 325 Main Street, et cetera, each time they speak. During a public delegation, Gary will open lines for comment. Please wait to be called on to speak. Once you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone or your phone. During each agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted to speak on that particular item. Only one person may speak at a time. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be called upon. Board members will be called upon to provide comment via a roll call. Members and alternates, for all motions, in the interest of making sure we have a clear record, please plan on roll call votes so the public and Brooke, taking minutes, can be very clear on the record. Only hosts are permitted to share screens at this time. Any documents to be shared must come through Jennifer at jlindo@eltownhall.com. As required by executive order, all documents being discussed and reviewed at the meeting must be posted on town website no later than 24 hours prior to the meeting. This entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom. And upon the host logging out, the meeting will cease and so will the recording. The meeting cannot continue without a host. I see that Mr. Lisca has joined us. Jim, are you there? Mr. Lisca?
Muted.
Muted, unmute yourself, Jim, if you're there. I'd like to seat you. I'd also forgot to introduce Mr. Gary Geisell, who is filling in for Jen and Mr. Maholland. Thank you, too. Oh, sorry, Jim, here comes Mr. Dwyer.
Preempted.
Sorry, Mr. Dwyer, you're on. Unmute yourself, please. All right, public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak on the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Mr. Geisell, I don't believe we have anybody, do we, from the public?
No one in the public?
No. Mr. Rizzo is with Mr. Biaga, there we go. Mr. Dwyer. Public hearing is outdoor eating, dining. I will read them per application. Number one is application of Eugene Imini for Black Point Pizza for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 44 Black Point Road. Application of Eduardo Martone for a special permit for outdoor dining at 11 East Patagonia Road. Application of East Lime Cafe LLC DBA Smokie O'Grady's for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at a property identified in the application as 306 Flanders Road, Niantic. Application of Niantic Morton House LLC for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at property identified in the application as 215 Main Street, Niantic. Application of EH LLC DBA Family Pizza for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at property identified in the application as 233 Main Street, Niantic. Application of Leo Roach for Strive LLC for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at property identified in the application as 247-2 Main Street, Niantic. Application of Teddy Ignatius, sorry Teddy, for Main Street Grill for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 252 Main Street, Niantic. Application number eight is of La Llorona, La Llorona, for a renewal of a an expansion of a special permit for outdoor dining at property identified in the application as 267 to 283 Main Street, also known as 13 Hope Street, Niantic. I'm going to ask Bill to explain this to us when I'm done reading these applications. Number nine, application of Steve Turner for Lillian's for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 374 Main Street, Niantic. Application of Costas Anastasio for Niantic Diner for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 26 West Main Street, Niantic. Application of Niantic Pizza for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at property identified in the application as 53 West Main Street, Niantic. Application of Steve Carpenter for a Niantic Bay Inn Incorporated, also known as Lime Tavern, for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 229 West Main Street, Niantic. Bill, would you like to explain La Llorona?
Yes, I can, as you know, it operated as Burke's and it had another name. There's been two or three different operators in there. They have had an existing special permit for outdoor dining, obviously they serve alcohol. And there's new operator running a Mexican restaurant that essentially opened, I think, two days ago. And as part of what they're doing, obviously, and during the pandemic, the outdoor dining piece is a big piece. We, we had gone through several designs in there, wanted to expand, as you look at the face of the building, to the right-hand side of the building. Gary, you don't happen to have that drawing, do you? And can you split screen it if you do? Is that something you can do?
For those of you, why Gary's trying to help us out here, basically what they did is they cleaned up the existing outdoor dining area.
They did.
Quite well, I must say. Made it look very much better, much better. And then they added three tables to the right of the doorway, also with a nice fence and some lighting. So it looks 10 times better than it, than it was previously.
And also follow that with, they had an old beat-up wooden fence and we, that has, there you go. You see the area in yellow on the screen, that's the new area. There is a sidewalk there. And it's obviously to the left, as you look at the screen, is some parking, which is very similar to what we have on the other end where you see the other tables. On the top of the screen is where the existing outdoor dining was. The expansion is in yellow, as Terry has pointed out appropriately, there are three additional tables. And so they are asking for that to be a permanent addition. It is surrounded by a black iron fence, which is much more attractive than what was previously there. They intend to add flowers, et cetera, as they move forward and hopefully are very successful. Being on the sidewalk incorporating some of the grass there, the sidewalk is not a public sidewalk. It was part of the original design of the building, which I did many years ago. And it was to kind of move people around. At this stage, we've progressed and to encourage the restaurant and hopefully to help them be successful, in my view, this is just somewhat innocuous in a housekeeping issue. But nonetheless, the expansion requires your endorsement.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
You're welcome, thank you, Terry.
All right, Gary, we are all set with that. I will make a note that the legal ad has run and all applicants and site plans are posted on the town website as required per executive order. These are all renewal, pardon me for a minute. These are all renewing renewal applications except La Llorona Restaurant, which is expanding the existing outdoor dining. Bill just explained to you, are there any questions from any commission members?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just curious, the Smarties is not in business, who has the restaurant at the Morton House?
The, if I may, Terry.
Go ahead.
The restaurant, the interior was gutted and removed. They had originally wanted to add more rooms and expand that part of the business for whatever reason, being that it's a legal pre-existing non-conforming use, I just can't allow that. Well, I won't allow it, so they are looking for another user. It may end up retail, I had a conversation the other day. However, in the interim, they want to maintain the right to that outdoor patio in case they find another restaurant user and they decide that that's a, a path they want, what they want to pursue. So that's why they're asking for the renewal. It may not get used, it may essentially become a mute point if they put another user in. And if us down the line and another restaurant comes along, they would have to come back to you.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? No, at this time, I'd ask a motion to continue or close the public hearing on outdoor dining and expansion of La Llorona's.
So moved, Kim Callagene, so moved.
Thank you, Kim, do I have a second? Mr. Dwyer, thank you. All those in favor, I will do a roll call. Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Kim Kay?
Hi.
Ms. Markovitz? You're on mute, Denise. And Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Myself is an I. Motion carries 60, oh, excuse me, all those against? Any abstains? Motion carries 600. Moving on. A regular meeting. Item number one is the application of Kenneth Biaga, ONG Industries Agent, Rider Truck Rental Incorporated Owner, for a special permit for a change of use from existing truck facility to a Mason Contractor Supply Yard and Store at 10 Colton Road, East Lime, Connecticut. So as you know, we closed a public hearing, we were waiting on the inland wetlands report, which has passed, signed from our Mr. Geisell there. Anybody have any comments on this? Application? No, as, as I'm sure you know, I do. As you know, I, I am an advocate of sidewalks and, you know, granted, you know, this existing LI zone does not have any sidewalks. However, with businesses that are allowed in such areas, there is a potential in the future to where there could be a use for them. You know, you could have delis, cafeterias, hotels, et cetera, office buildings. Being someone who travels this road quite often, you know, I do see people running up and down this road, exercising, that is. So the potential for the future use of sidewalks is there. It's obviously this commission's choice on whether to grant them the waiver for that or not. But I myself would like to see it put in there, you know? We've granted, you know, waivers quite often. And I just think like Mr. Walker said before, I did speak with Mr. Walker on this and he appreciates my view on it, you know, but it is ultimately up to the commission and that is my view. You know, the applicant did say he has no problem with installing sidewalks, which makes me give a smile. You know, I did go off a little bit last meeting and I apologize for that, but you know my feeling on sidewalks. So, there you go.
What is Mr. Walker's opinion?
He, same as, same as before, you know, he does not see the need for it in that area. He does think, as he stated last time, that, you know, we have been pretty lenient on the sidewalk waivers. You know, so that was basically it. I mean, there was more to it, but a lot of small talk to it, but, you know, I'm thinking of being proactive, not reactive. You know, with this store being both, you know, the commercial aspect and the retail store of it, you're going to have increase in it. At the beginning of this road in this zone, there are two properties there, which, you know, I rarely, excuse me, very rarely see any use, honestly. And so the potential is there for that area to get developed. You know, up the street, there's a club, you know, down the end of the road there, there's possibility for development. So, you know, by reading our regulations, the use of sidewalks could possibly, most likely be needed in the future. And it's a lot easier to be proactive than reactive. And that is my view. Anybody else? No. Another thing I do is have a question is on, you know, last meeting, we talked about-
Denise Markovitz, I tend to agree with you, Terry, because Dr. Robson on Boston Post Road-
Oh, Denise, your video is frozen, but I heard you there for a minute, go ahead.
I agree with you, Terry, Dr. Robson on Boston Post Road was required to put in a sidewalk. I think with the expectation that at some point in time, the sidewalk would extend all the way down there. It hasn't happened yet, but I imagine that at some point in the future it will. So I, I'm with you, I think a sidewalk should be, should go in.
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole idea is to have it put in by individuals versus, you know, the town or the state, per se. But again, as I said, it's ultimately up to the commission. And what I was just going to bring up was, you know, I asked them at the last meeting on, you know, how are they going to fuel their machinery? And they weren't sure if it was going to be diesel or propane. To me, that raised a little bit of an issue. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm totally in favor of this project, but if they do bring in fuel, that raises a whole nother issue. You know, in terms of containment and, you know, there is a small area within their application to where they are within 300 feet of the wetlands, you know, but it's just my concern. That's all. So if they do apply to, you know, excuse me, if they do go to diesel, obviously, they're going to have to go through this whole process again, I do believe. Is that correct, Mr. Maholland?
Yeah, if they make any change to the site plan, they've got to come back to you.
All right.
So what they presented to you is what is going, if you choose to approve it, is what is approved and that's what we'll enforce.
Right. But when I asked them, you know, what they were going to fuel, they weren't sure. And I couldn't find it in here somewhere, which I was going to look up while the chairman was presenting, but unfortunately, he fell ill. But it is in our minutes stating that they're not sure, so again, just a point to think about. That is my two cents. Anybody else?
No.
Nope. Moving on. Do I have a motion to approve, deny, or continue said application? Let me amend that, with the waiver for sidewalks, is that correct, Mr. Maholland? Even though it's not written in here?
That's what they have asked for, Mr. Chairman, and so obviously, what's the motion you're, you're being asked to approve or you're seeking, so I think Mr. Dwyer needs to clarify that.
Yeah.
I would be with the waiver for the sidewalks.
Okay.
I second it.
Mr. Dwyer made a motion to approve with the waiver of sidewalks, seconded by Ms. Thurlow. All those in favor? Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Kim Kay?
Grand Tepstein.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Anybody else in favor? Ms. Markovitz? Denise? Can you hear me?
No.
You're a no. So all those in favor would be Mr.- Yes, I agree.
I can hear you.
Thank you. So all those in favor, Mr. Peck, Mr. Dwyer, and Ms. Thurlow? Is that correct? All those against would be myself, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Markovitz. All those abstaining is Kim Kay. Therefore, the motion does not pass. It's three, four, three, four, two against, one abstain. I believe we need four, is that correct, Mr. Maholland?
I think you're at a simple majority on this. I think that carries, but I'm not the parliamentarian. Gary, you have a thought on that? It's three, two, one.
I thought the simple majority would carry.
I think so, too.
All right, just my, just my question, okay, then the motion carries. Approved with the sidewalk waiver. There you go, Mr. Biaga, you're approved. Okay, moving on. The outdoor dining permits. As I read before, we're going to motion them as one motion for two through eight, we're going to hold off on number nine, which is La Llorona, and 10 through 13. So we have the applications of Eugene Imini, Eduardo Martone, East Lime Cafe, Niantic Morton House, EH LLC DBA Family Pizza, Leo Roach for Strive, Main Street Grill, Lillian's, Niantic Diner, Niantic Pizza, and Steve Carpenter. Do I have a motion to approve the outdoor dining on said applications?
I make a motion to approve as stated.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Thurlow, thank you. All those in favor for the outdoor dining permits presented? Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Kim Kay?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Who did I miss? I believe that's it, right, one, two, three, four, five.
I think you got it, yes.
I got it. Motion carries 60, uh, who's against? 600. Moving on to application number nine of La Llorona for the renewal and expansion of the outdoor dining permit and area, AKA 13 Hope Street. Do I have a motion of the outdoor dining permit and expansion for 13 Hope Street?
So moved.
Kim Kay? Do I have a second, Mr. Peck? All those in favor, Mr. Peck?
Hi.
Kim Kay?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Hi.
There you go. Myself is an I, all those against, abstain, motion carries 600.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we'll publish next Thursday and it will be effective on Friday, thank you.
I was just going to ask you that, Bill, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a question about the previous vote. That was, was that a tie vote or was it four?
It was one. It passed by simple majority, there was three in favor, two against, and one abstention.
Oh, okay.
I had a no and I would have changed my vote to make it very exciting.
Yeah. And I can't, I probably, I would have worn a tie if I knew.
Just there you go.
Okay, moving on, thank you. Approval of minutes of March 18th, 2021. I actually found a couple typos or misquotes. On page four, it looks like the third of, actually, fourth, fifth paragraph says, "Mr. Donovan asked about the sidewalk waiver and discussed how that entire road would now be sidewalks." I was referring to the industrial park road on that, not Colton Road. And the next sentence, it says, "Mr. Biaga replied that they have on problem." I believe that should say no problem. And that is all I found on that. Anybody else have any issues, find any errors? No? Then do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended for March 18th, 2021? Ms. Thurlow makes a motion, do I have a second, Mr. Dwyer? All those in favor, Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Kim Kay?
Abstain, I was not present.
You're abstention, got you. Ms. Thurlow?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Markovitz?
Yes.
Denise? Myself is a yes. Kim Kay is an abstention, motion carries by a vote of 501. Moving on, there is no old business. A new business, we have the application of Todd Sikowski for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulations, section 20.28 and 25.3.3 to allow taproom brewery service in CB zones by way of special permit. Mr. Maholland, you can schedule that, please?
Yes, I will, thank you.
20th, I believe, yeah? Any business on the floor by the commission?
May I just ask a question about that application or does it have to wait till next time?
Uh.
It should wait?
Text amendment? Yeah.
It should wait.
Okay, all right.
But Kim, if you want to email me separately, I could probably field your question.
It's not even that important, Bill, I'll, I won't even bother you with it.
All righty, thank you.
Zoning official, Mr. Maholland?
I'm back. We're busy, we're studying. Lot of eyes in the fire. Who knows what will gel and come before you. But I'm there, been in touch, I've kind of been in touch all along. So thank you for your support on, for me, and we'll be in touch and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir, and take care of yourself.
I have a question.
Mr. Peck?
Just on these, all these outdoor dining applications, do you take the initiative contacting all the business owners?
Yes, how it works norm is that Jen, who, as you know, can be very helpful and very supportive, she essentially rides, bird dogs those, and she sets that up. I actually don't get that involved because these are renewals and, and we go through the motions, but we wrote the regulation to ensure that there was an annual review so that if something got out of control, you'd have the ability to examine the operator and, and the activity. So she typically notices everybody, is supposed to notice everybody, I think she has. We haven't sat down because I've been in and out recently, and now she is out. But we pretty much do that to ensure continuity for these people because many of them forget that they even have to do it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we're, we're proactive on it. Most of them are busy now and with the pandemic, they're all trying to make a living and get by. And I would just share with everybody because this is an opportunity. The outdoor dining exemption was extended to us, I think they've, near the end of May, and then the legislature is passing or either has already passed a, a new regulation that may not affect us here much in Niantic and East Lime, that essentially extends the, these exemptions for another year. that essentially extends the, these exemptions for another year in one form or another.
That's what I heard as well and I was just going to ask you about. Can you hear me now? There you go. I did hear that as well and I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah.
Bill. Yeah. Okay. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dwyer, go ahead.
Could we have a informal meeting to discuss that statewide zone meeting we had? It seemed to be contradicting some of our, our bylaws. Hello? What?
You mean the, the class that we all attended a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
So what are you asking? I don't understand.
Clarifications, I'd like to know whether, whether the, whether we are complying with the state or we're making up our own rules. Like, um, uh, wave, particularly waivers. We can only approve an application as presented. And if there's a waiver, it's supposed to go before another board where, where we actually approve waivers. So that was only one issue. There were several other issues in there.
I do, I do believe that the town does have the jurisdiction to have their own zoning regulations from what I, you know, understood from the class. I mean, I was also there. But there are other issues. I do agree, but I mean, it's, it's the town's interpretation of our zoning regulations. That's why they are the Eastlime zoning regulations. Though the, the state has guidelines, by all means, right, Mr. Maholland?
That's correct. You're correct, yeah.
So I think, Bill, you know, we have the entitled entitlements, rather, to do so.
Yeah, if I may, Terry?
Yes, Mr. Maholland, go ahead.
It, when you read sets of zoning regulations and you'll find, uh, find anomalies in every set in every town. And, and one sometimes can often make an argument for and against a type of regulation. Um, often the, the legal view may change as a result of case law and sometimes that doesn't trickle down for a while. And I, we can put 20 attorneys in a room, land use attorneys, and sometimes get 21 opinions on either side of a, of a debate or argument. So, you know, our set, I think, is pretty good. Um, and as you have learned over the years, developers and people who use our regs will come in and argue their points consistently and all the time. And in essence, if they don't like a reg, they can make application to change a reg. But I think ours, in my opinion, are pretty solid. Um, and we do talk to town attorney frequently about when we adopt regulations, et cetera, because we want to make sure we're legal. So often I send those over, even though they're not required to the attorney, to ask if they, they see something that might not be appropriate or might put us in legal jeopardy down the road somewhere. So we do try to evet those. Thank you.
Another issue was the word shall. We, we, we have the word shall in our regs. But according to that zone thing, the word, it should be, um, uh, not the word shall, shall has two definitions legally.
Shall means you will. Our regs say you shall, you will. You must.
It's mandatory.
Yes.
I think the word mandatory was used. So is that an issue with us or not?
No, um, you'll find the word shall in many sets of zoning regs. It essentially means, as you pointed out, it's mandatory. You must comply with whatever that word shall modifies. Whatever the subject may be.
Okay, uh, Bill, uh, could you, could you give us a summary of, uh, what this up in Hartford, what we're being, uh-
Yeah. Uh, uh, if you're speaking about the, uh-
Yes.
Desegregate Connecticut Affordable Housing, there are several efforts being made to, uh, to modify the affordable housing regulations. One effort would allow duplexes and triplexes to land anywhere next to anybody's home in any zoning district, eliminate zoning, and the same with a, um, a trailer. Now, I have not looked at the regulations lately and what they proposed. Uh, I'm a little bit out of touch, but we'll be up to speed. Um, at some point, I may ask that our town attorney come in and give a little 20-minute dissertation on this, just to keep you up to speed. I'm, I've got a file going on, on, on all of these things. And as I get emails and, and, uh, and notices, I put them in the file. I need to sit down, analyze the file, and I will let you know and I will, uh, and I think our next meeting might be a little light and maybe that's something we can think about doing for that meeting and let me see what I can do. And, uh, it, it's important that we keep abreast of it. This will not only affect our community, but every community in the state, every small town. And, um, some people think it would have an adverse impact, others think it's a wonderful thing. And I think once we were all educated and we have enough knowledge, where you can all make a determination for yourselves, what it may mean and what it may mean to your community. But I think it's important that the community pay attention.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Also, you know, I got a question why, you know, people are asking you questions. You know, back to the Colton Road thing, that whole development that's going in there, Rocky Neck Village.
Right.
Now, I thought they were not supposed to have access over to, uh, Colton Road there. I thought it was like emergency, like gated.
Yeah, if, if-
If so, excuse me, is, if so, is there any, is there gonna be any notice stating so?
See, it won't be any notice. It will be as part of the approval, that was a condition, that it'll be gated and closed off to the public. Um, obviously, that's a residential development. Colton Road is an industrial park that the, the town trucks are parked out there. There's a lot of commercial activity, a lot of heavy truck and equipment activity, deliveries, et cetera. So we wanted to separate residents from that area. Um, you certainly can't control where they walk and jog and run, but for vehicle traffic so that the development has essentially one way in and one way out with emergency access.
So is it like, is it like a double gated area or is it just a single gate? So in other words, like-
Um, at this point, I think it's a single gate, as I recall, and obviously that was what, uh, years ago that we approved this. Uh, many years ago after litigation. Um, where we're at now, they have to plant, um, evergreens along their easterly, southerly border area. Um, however, we had asked to use, uh, blue spruce and apparently, apparently there has been a blight on these trees and they're not available. And, uh, Gary and I actually both collectively sat down for a half an hour and called various nurseries and looked into this and that's absolutely a, a correct statement. So we're looking into alternatives. Um, the first building is almost ready for occupancy, so we have to, um, practically separate those people who move in from the construction activity, isolate it, make it livable for them and protect them from the development as best we can while they continue to construct as they move more to the north. So those are the things we're looking at. None of these developments are without issues. I will also add, I noticed today, I'll probably get out there tomorrow, that the gateway project has seeded, Hydro seeded the big slope.
Does that mean they're going to have a permanent sign and get rid of the billboard on the highway?
Well, we were, uh, we were fighting about it and arguing about it. So, but I wanted to note that that was done, they're nearing, they're needing, nearing completion. Um, I'm, I'm, they've agreed that I hold the last two buildings out for COs until they complete all the little minor details and then I'll release those to ensure they, the, the gravel areas are buttoned up, loomed and seeded. And, uh, so that's kind of where we're at with that, but that is progressing and they did Hydro seed. Now hopefully we'll have some grass in a, in a week or two.
Cause I do recall that the representative for that development did say that, you know, they were very close to a permanent sign. And this is two months ago, three months ago?
It is.
Just curious, just saying. Anyway, sorry about that. Moving on, uh, comments from the ex officio. Roseanne herself also is a little under the weather. Um, she did call me just for a quick little discussion about how last night they had a meeting and they had discussions and presentations on how to spend the American funding money, I believe it is, right? Um, then they had their regular meeting and they were just discussing on how to come up with forms for people who may need some of that funding, et cetera, et cetera. And that's about that. Uh, comments from the zoning board liaison to planning commission. Kim K?
Yes.
March 9th. Yes.
So you all sent me into the lion's den at that meeting because, um, I will just say that it was opinion of the planning committee that they were very upset that we did not, uh, hold off on our vote for something, I can't even remember what it was. Uh, because they had, uh, Gary send us a letter that said they wanted us to, uh, to not vote and that they wanted time to deliberate. Gary, do you remember what the topic was?
Um, I think it had to do with, God, no, I doubt, a month ago.
I think it was like a small text amendment or something. I can't remember.
Oh, it was your FEMA text amendment?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so I was, uh, rather abrasive and I let them know that if they're going to ask us to hold off on voting, they should tell us why. Because they just can't say, hey, don't take a vote. And, um, I don't know that the planning chair was very happy with my response, but he took the feedback and the meeting moved on. So I think, um, we probably should, I guess, be sensitive to requests from other committees, uh, should they send communications that they would like more time to deliberate. But frankly, I think the matter was so cut and dry, I don't think there was a need to deliberate. Um, Bill, I'm sorry if you wanted to say something.
Yeah, excuse me, Kim, did they ask you? Or did you just tell them that?
Oh, they wanted, they were very upset. The chairman was, I will say, um, well, pensive, he was clearly upset that we went ahead and voted. I don't know that the rest of the committee cared so much, but the chairman was rather upset.
The only reason why I say that is because when we go to the planning meetings, we are only there as a liaison. Technically, we are not allowed to speak with another land use commission. So, you know, on your next visit, if they do ask you another questions-
There won't be one.
Yeah. You ha, you have to, uh, unfortunately say that you cannot comment on that because we are there just as liaison, so.
So, um, I, I will just say that, um, I, I felt that a response was needed because they were not being nice. But whatever, I don't really care if I violated public policy. I care less.
That's why I asked if he asked you a question, that's all, so.
I've all, I asked if he would like me to make a comment and he said yes, so I did.
Okay.
And then he wasn't happy with my comment.
Gotcha. Mr. Maholland?
Uh, I was just going to add, um, text amendments, zone changes, things like that are referred by statute to various agencies, including the planning agency on a text amendment. They have a certain amount of days to consider it. I mean, I believe with all due respect to our friends in planning that they had adequate time under the statute. It may not have fallen into a, uh, the timing may have been off in terms of their meeting dates. And, you know, I don't know whether they cancel meetings or not and, and, and like we meet twice a month. I'm not sure if they do or not. Um, but, uh, I, I think we might as well consider this one water over the dam and, uh, move forward. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Thank you, Kim K. Uh, Mr. Peck, you're up next, April 13th.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, comments from the chairman. Uh, as you know, Mr. Walker is ill, so I got thrown in here at the last minute. Um, as most of you know, Jen had surgery today. She's doing well. She is sitting home. Um, from what I understand, she will be back helping Mr. Maholland on Monday, I do believe.
We're hoping for Monday. Um, as we all know, you never know with surgeries.
Never know. Cause she basically is Bill, Gary's and that other, what's it, Steve's savior, as you may say. So, from that aspect. I'd also thank Mr. Maholland for being here. You're looking good. Keep it up.
Brian, the only, the only good thing is, as Norm says, I get another 100,000 miles and I dropped about 13 pounds, so awful way to do it, but, uh, I'm on my way, so we'll see.
There you go.
Thank you.
Other than that, warm weather's coming. Get out there, be friendly. Stay safe. Do I have a motion? Up, Mr. Maholland?
No, I was just listening.
Oh, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Kim K, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dwyer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, wave your hand. That's it, I'm not going through the real call. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.